Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. And any actions taken tonight on final development plans, design review, or minor amendments are final. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on zoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item, second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone, identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you that you please either turn off or silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Planning Commission. We will begin tonight by approving the items on the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are, number one is approval of the March 2, 2011 minutes of the regular meeting. Item number two is Platts. Item number three is a major amendment in SubArea C, the Avera McKenon Plan Development District, to add on sale alcohol as an allowed use at East 23rd Street and South Cliff Avenue. Item number four is a conditional use permit in the RA-1 Residential District to allow construction of electronic imaging sign at 1912 West 13th Street. Item number five is a conditional use permit in the C-2 General Commercial District to allow motor vehicle sales and display at 2203 West 12th Street. Item number six is a final development plan in SubArea C of the Rolling Hills Plan Development District to construct a medical office building at West 69th Street and South Western Avenue. And item number seven is a minor amendment in SubArea A, Sioux Falls Plaza Plan Development District, to increase the maximum allowed height of the press box structure from 45 feet to 79 feet and allow a fence height of 8' 6" at 1200 Northwestern Avenue. Are there any objections to anything on the consent agenda from anyone in the audience? No? Are there any objections from the Planning Commission to any items on the consent agenda this evening?
Madam Chair, I'll be stepping down.
Okay, thank you. Being no objections, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a couple seconds, so all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. The consent agenda carries. Anyone here for any items on the consent agenda this evening, you are free to go. Is there a motion to approve the items on the regular agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign. We have approval for the regular agenda. So, item number eight, staff, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. My name is Dave Loveland, and I'm representing planning staff on this and one other item tonight. Item number eight is a rezon from the AG Agricultural District to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed uses. The applicant is requesting approval in order to develop the property for light industrial uses at some point in the future. The general location of this project is at 611 and 6700 East Rice Street on the eastern edge of Sioux Falls city limits, and it encompasses approximately 70 acres in size. As noted, the existing zoning is agricultural, and it's just on the periphery of the city. The abutting zoning and land uses to the north is I-1 Light Industrial. To the south is the RC Recreation Conservation District, which is part of the Great Bear Recreation Area, and it's agricultural in the county. And to the east is agricultural in the county, and to the west is also part of the I-1 Light Industrial District. The compatibility rating against Great Bear was noted as a three, so the applicant in the future should take care to, with the project development, should take care to address any transition issues that may arise. The I-1 District is intended to provide for a number of light manufacturing, wholesale warehousing, and service uses in an attractive industrial park-like setting. If the zoning request is approved, future land uses will be required to conform to the I-1 Light Industrial District. The public agencies note that on traffic engineering, access drive is required to be permitted, and the applicant may be required to construct a deceleration lane depending on the project in the future. And just as a note, Rice Street is scheduled for resurfacing later this summer. The Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan marks this area to be within the developed area of the city but in close proximity to future light industrial. The proposed zoning district is generally a good match for surrounding land uses, although, as I stated earlier, the applicant should take care to address the transition to Great Bear with final site designs. The Parks and Recreation Department has been notified of the pending application, and any comments from the department will be conveyed prior to or at the public hearing. And they will be interested in seeing what the final project is, but at this moment, they had no specific comment. So because the subject application conforms to the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan and should not detrimentally affect neighboring properties, we are recommending approval of the rezoning. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions for Dave? No? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
I'm Jim Clark with Excel Energy, and I live at 4205 South Highland Avenue in Sioux Falls. We own about 1,000 acres of land out by the Angus Anson Plant on East Rice Street, and Highway 100 will be coming across our property in a few years, and we felt that it's time to start rezoning some of this property. We have parcels that are light industrial, commercial, and most of it's ag. This site is ag, should be light industrial, so we're doing this for future growth in the area.
Any questions for Jim? No? Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
I'll look for a motion on item number eight, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve item number eight.
Pam, you know what? I didn't allow for any public input.
Oh, okay.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to say anything? Step forward, please, sir. Sorry about that.
Yes, my name is Randy Harkless. I live at 4701 North Timberline Avenue. I would like to have a little more explanation about the boundary, the outside boundary, is that land is not necessarily owned by Excel Energy, is it? I'm confused about the boundaries.
Okay. Dave, can you maybe speak to that?
I defer to the applicant.
Okay.
All of the land that we're rezoning is Excel Energy land.
Okay, is it only the light green section?
That we're rezoning?
Yes. So the outside boundary signifies what?
That's the 600-foot boundary that we generally put on the maps just to show adjacent properties. On some of our applications, there is a statement where they're requested to inform schools or churches within 600 feet, and so that's just why that's noted. That's just a proximity boundary, so, at 600 feet.
Okay, so the property lies south and east of Rice Street, then?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You ready, Pam?
I'm ready. Madam Chair, I move to approve item number eight.
I second that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve item number eight. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number eight carries. Item number nine.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, my name is Steve Randall. I'll be representing planning staff on this and one other item this evening. Item nine is a petition for Bentwood Village PD. It's a major amendment. The applicant is Bentwood Place Incorporated, and the purpose of the application is to adjust the subarea boundaries of the Plan Development District to accommodate the development of townhomes. Basically, four-unit townhomes attached, and in the process of doing that, the simplest way to accommodate additional townhome development in this Plan Development District is to expand the subarea that would allow the townhomes and reduce the area that just is a lower density to allow the same townhomes. We have received exhibit from the applicant, and it's included in your addendum packet. That exhibit would be published if the major amendment is approved by the City Council and yourselves this evening. What that exhibit shows, and I'll fill in the blanks in your staff report, it's basically increasing the area of SubArea K by five acres and reducing the area of SubArea J by five acres. What that does to the lot count is the existing 52 lots in SubArea J are reduced to 47, and the 16 lots in SubArea K are now increased to 28, so approximately a seven-acre lot adjustment. Those lots would be along the south boundary of the subarea, and staff feels that they would provide an appropriate transition to what we expect to be future commercial development to the south. We're right across the street from the school, Explorer Elementary School site, and so with a compatibility rating of four, we expect that the development is generally compatible with the school district, and traffic to these townhomes is on a side street, so it's not really in front of the school. We don't expect a traffic impact from this development. Staff is recommending approval. We've had no calls, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions of Steve? No? Is the petitioner here, please?
Good evening. Brent Anson in 5,000 South Minnesota Avenue. I'm representing the petitioner tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Brent? No? Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Anybody from the audience here to speak on item number nine? No? I'll look for commission action on item number nine.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the major amendment, item number nine.
Thank you, Meredith. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is second. Is there any discussion on item number nine? No? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number nine carries. Item number 10.
Item 10 is an application for a conditional use permit to allow a recycling processing facility on the subject property, which is located at 1305 East 39th Street North, just half a block off of North Cliff Avenue. It's a little over a one-acre site in the I-1 Light Industrial District, and we've given it a compatibility rating of four. Again, it is compatible with the adjacent uses in the area with minor conflict potential. The applicant has addressed that potential in a pretty good detailed description of their business and also their site management plan for the control of product coming to the site, how it would be handled onsite, traffic, and so on. The requirements for conditional use permit in I-1 for recycling processing requires a review by the Health Department and the Planning Department of a site management plan. That review has taken place, and we've discussed with the applicant measures in their plan that are acceptable to the Planning and Health Department, and the applicant can address that this evening if you have any questions. Therefore, we're recommending that we proceed with approval of the project. Generally, R&amp;T Unit Can is locally owned and operated, and the applicant has detailed description of their building. They're planning to construct a new building that is shown about 200 feet back from the front property line centered on the site with side yards of 40 feet and adjacent to the rear property line. They have an application in for a building or a construction permit at the present time. If the conditional use permit is approved, we have five days, and that would become effective. They have provided the required site plan elements as far as the zoning ordinance is concerned. There is screening of the outdoor site, however, they're not proposing to have any outdoor storage of any product whatsoever. All of the product will be handled inside, stored inside, and transferred inside. Staff is recommending approval, and we've received no calls on this. We do have a list of requirements, conditions that we put on there just to facilitate the building permit process, so that everybody is aware down in zoning and building services as well as here at this public hearing what those requirements are. Some of them are required anyway, but we want to emphasize that these will be conditions for approval in the future should any one of these conditions not be conformed to. The first one is a revised plan to show a minimum 20-foot wide gate for the fire department access. Second one is a revised site plan showing 114 by 35 loading space. Third, paved onsite driveway is required unless enclosed by screen fencing. Fourth one, public sidewalk is going to be required. The fifth one, processing operations of the facility must be fully enclosed within a building. Six, outdoor storage of recyclable materials must be within the opaque screened area at least six feet high. The applicant has stated that there will not be any outdoor storage. And the final one is due to its location in the Water Source Protection Overlay District, a Water Source Protection District questionnaire must be submitted. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions of Steve?
Steve, you had me going to the dictionary with your word "nonferrous."
Oh.
Means iron. Anyway, thank you. Good report.
Well, if that's as tough as it gets for Steve.
Yeah.
Lucky night. Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Yes, my name is Ron Nedved. I'm co-owner of R&amp;T Unit Can Company, and we're the ones that are gonna try and get this done, and if you've got any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay.
Somebody was wanting to know what a nonferrous was?
Yeah.
I figured it out after I went.
Non-iron. Non-iron. We buy anything that a magnet does not stick to as far as metals.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ron? Nope. Thank you, Ron.
Okay.
I'll look for commission action on item number 10.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of item number 10.
Anybody from the audience want to talk on 10 first? Good thing. Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Again, Madam Chair, I recommend approval of item number 10. The following stipulations.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item number 10 carries. Item number 11.
Madam Chair, I'll be stepping down again.
Okay.
Good evening again. Item number 11 is a minor amendment in SubArea A of the Village at Heather Ridge Plan Development District to amend the previously approved final development plan in order to allow for patio expansion. The applicant is requesting approval in order to amend the existing final development plan and then incorporate an expanded patio which would connect to the front door of the building. The location is at 6211 South Old Village Place or the southeast corner of 69th and Western, and it's McNally's Irish Pub. The area of the entire site is 8.7 acres in size, and the existing land use is a multi-tenant commercial building. Abutting zoning and land uses include, to the north, SubArea A of the Heather Ridge PD, which is parking currently and vacant with a compatibility rating of five. To the south is SubArea B of Heather Ridge PD, which is an office building and a compatibility rating of four. To the east is also SubArea B of the Heather Ridge PD, which is parking and office, and that's compatibility rating of four. And to the west is RS-2 Residential, which is a church, which is a compatibility rate of three. The Village at Heather Ridge Plan Development District was created by City Council Action in November of 2003 to allow a mixed-use office and commercial development. Final development plans for several office and multi-tenant commercial buildings have since been approved by the Planning Commission, and the specific final development plan requested for amendment was for a multi-tenant commercial building and was approved by the Planning Commission on June 1st of 2005. In your staff report, you'll note the applicable regulations and standards. To reiterate a couple of things that we went over with the applicants, is that the parking, the total parking calculation is utilizing mixed-use and bicycle rack reductions in calculating proposed parking, and when combined, SubArea A and B together, the overall site plan does meet parking requirements. The applicant has been advised to meet with surrounding property owners both within the immediate development and residential homes further to the east. The applicant should be prepared to address the outcome of such conversations, and you'll note in your addendum that several of the communications our office has received has been relayed on to you. The applicant did hold that meeting last Wednesday on March 30th, and they'll be able to address some of that in a little bit further detail. Now, moderate concern exists over the traffic flow internal to the site. In order to alleviate any confusion or potential for accidents, staff is recommending the applicant install ballards to provide a physical barrier to the patio from traffic and to install physical and visual components to ensure that traffic is routed around the patio in the appropriate flow pattern. As I noted, within your staff report, you'll note that the applicant has provided a letter of explanation of their project, and as a result of our analysis, we are recommending approval because the subject application meets the original intent of the Plan Development District and final development plan approval, but that approval recommendation is with the two conditions, as I noted earlier. The one, first, is ballards shall be provided in areas with traffic moving toward the patio in order to provide secure seating areas on the patio. And number two, directional signs, curbs, or landscaping features shall be installed to provide both visual and physical direction for the flow of traffic around the patio. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Is the petitioner here, please?
I'm Diane Ducoyer with Architecture Incorporated, 415 South Main Avenue. The existing structure that we have, our patio that we have for McNally's, is roughly about 450 square feet. We're expanding that to the west for safety with the drive around the facility, around the expansion of the patio, rerouting the traffic. The patio will be about 900 square feet, an increase from about 45 seats out there now to roughly 65, with a bar added, a fireplace fountain, and some plant materials for sound deadening, as well as the five-foot-high glass panel to provide a windbreak. By closing off that street, that allows service staff as well as patrons going in and out of the pub to safely cross into the patio. We have the owner here that can help answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions for Diane, please?
Diane?
Yes.
See, I like the way you laid this out and the way it changes that parking around like that.
Thank you.
Were you at the neighborhood meeting?
Yes, I was.
How many neighbors did you have?
I recorded seven neighbors in attendance.
And what was the general feeling of the neighbors there at the neighborhood meeting?
I think for the most part, the concern was the noise level and the anticipation that maybe having a full bar out there on the patio, which they don't have right now, could increase maybe the noise level, not only with the number of seats, but having a bar and liquor out there might increase the noise level. My position was that with having full-time staff out there, that would certainly help the supervision if things were to ever get out of hand. They haven't in the past. There's never been a complaint, as far as the owner is aware of, of anything happening out there. So they don't anticipate that happening again. They really do try to be good neighbors, and they want to continue to be so.
You talk about creating a noise barrier, and I didn't quite understand exactly what it was you were designing there, what you were talking about.
Well, we have a five-foot-high glass panel, which is really for the windbreak. It can also serve as some noise reduction, but we've also planted a three-foot, or will plant a three-foot-wide planter within the patio and within that five-foot-high glass wall to help with the noise reduction. It'll take some time for some of that to mature, but that's the intention with that.
Okay, thank you. Are you aware of the fact that we've been given a number of letters and a petition by a number of the neighborhood?
Yes, Dave Loveland has forwarded all of that to myself as well as to the owner.
Is that the impression you got at the neighborhood meeting, was that there wasn't going to be a coming together here or anything you could do from your end?
I think they were interested in maybe seeing an alternative plan or another option to help reduce that, but my understanding is with the use of the patio and the noise level, they follow city ordinance, and as far as I know, again, there hasn't been any complaint, so they plan to continue with that, with following the noise level and city ordinance, so they don't anticipate there to be a problem, but certainly would respect any concern that there is for that.
Thank you, Diane. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Diane?
Yes, I have one. Could you clarify something for me? Is the glass wall that you're talking about, does that go around the patio on all three sides?
Yes, on all three sides. The patio expands right up to the existing sidewalk, is what we're showing in that plan.
Is this similar to what they use at Champs?
Yeah, with the glass walls. Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, what are the plans for music out on the patio? I mean, is there a, is there going to be music? Is it going to, you know, are you going to have some kind of a sound system?
There is currently a sound system. There are speakers out there that are on the building. There are none that are out there on the patio and probably will not be on the patio. The owner has live music a couple of times during the summer, and they're mostly fundraisers. One is for Avera, and one is for the Make-A-Wish Foundation.
Okay.
And they anticipate continuing in the same manner.
Could the noise, or could the music out on the patio be limited to the weekends?
I would have to let the owner address that question.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions for Diane?
Madam Chair, I just have a question about the hours of operation. I don't know if there's a time that the patio closes down.
I believe, Nikki can correct me. Sure, come on up. Nikki Ellerbrook is the general manager and owner, as well as Bob Korea is the owner as well, and they're here tonight. Nikki Ellerbrook is the general manager and owner, as well as Bob Correa is the owner as well, and they're here tonight.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nikki Ellerbrook, I'm the general manager and owner of McNally's. The hours of operation would be that with the pub. And we're open from Sunday through Thursday from eleven AM till midnight and on the weekends from eleven AM till two AM. We do staff, door cops Friday and Saturday evenings that sit outside the building until we close from about eight-thirty till two AM. And I anticipate... I addressed in the meeting on Wednesday that the music level would be turned down to a level two. It goes from one to ten. It'd be turned down to a level two at ten PM, seven days a week, and off at eleven PM at the meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The seating's going to go from forty-five to sixty-five. When you would have a live event out there for your fundraiser, as you said, there was two per year, do you limit that to just those people that could sit in that area? So sixty-five people would be the maximum that would be at... If you had a live event there?
Yes, in the past, we have done one event with Avera McKinnon where we've added seating in the afternoon and the music was over by eight PM. That was one time last summer. But yeah, if we had an event out there, it would be on the patio, it wouldn't spill over.
Would be in the parking lot?
No.
Nikki? As I read a couple of the letters in addition to the petition, it seems to be the major concern is the hours that a band, if you had live entertainment.
Yep, and that would...
I'll leave something like that.
We end that at ten-thirty. And the city... We always... When we've done it before, it's always been two times a summer, I've sent a license or request for a license for the music and I believe the city wants it shut off by eleven PM and we've shut it off at ten-thirty.
How long have you had the existing patio out there since you opened?
Correct.
When Diane says to her knowledge, have you ever had a complaint?
I did get one phone call the first summer we were open addressing the speaker level and we turned it down. It was on Fourth of July in the afternoon and we turned it down. And to my knowledge, I haven't had any complaints since then. That was in two thousand and six.
Thank you, Nikki.
Any other questions, Nikki?
Thank you.
I'm guessing there's some people from the audience that want to speak, so...
Madam Chair, commission members, good evening. I'm Daryl Leonard and I live at sixty-three thirteen South Wickel Avenue, which is just to the east of McNally's. I'd like to thank you guys for taking the time to hear our concerns about the proposed patio expansion. I think it's pretty obvious, the first major concern we have is that the plan itself doesn't address the issue of the noise control. This is really... As they have music being played out there, even if it's not a live band, if there's music out there with the speakers up in the building, it already projects out to the neighborhood. It'll go to the houses behind and the houses across the street and the houses on the other side that people can hear. Up to now, it hasn't been a real big issue as I went around and we had neighborhood meetings ourselves and talked to them. A few of them have said they've called in with some complaints, but for the most part, they say, yes, they hear them. Hasn't been horrible, we're going to live with it. But that's the biggest concern. The other thing we have is we've got children living in the neighborhood, right in behind them. Kids are going to bed at eight-thirty at night and our concern there is you've got all these people out there at a bar atmosphere. It's going to be pretty difficult to hold that down. You can try all you want to and I'm not so concerned that they don't have... You know, they're not going to do a... Try to do their best to do it. But the fact of the matter is, I told them when I was in at the meeting, I said, what if you sell the place? The next person isn't so willing to work with us on that one. I said, I'd rather have some restriction of down and writing of what you're going to do and how you're going to do, so we know how to address that. I've got neighbors who go to bed early. They go to bed nine, nine-thirty because they got to get up at four-thirty. They're absolutely concerned about it. We've got people, my wife and I, with our backyard there. There are times when just the music is playing, no live band, but just the music is playing. That overrides the music I'm playing online. And when I play my music underneath my deck, I have it so it doesn't go beyond my backyard and I zero that in to just where I'm listening to it. And on those evenings, I've got to pretty much turn it off because I'm already... Their music's going to override everything. So we like to have our windows open at night and sleeping on a nice, cool summer evening and that music comes in. I would like to make a comment on the seating because there was a lot of confusion on the seating because they stated the seating was going to go to sixty-five and yet under site development plan that they handed out that night, if you flip it over the back, it says it's going to be an eighteen-hundred square foot with seating up to one-hundred-and-ten. You know, understand maybe they're only going to use sixty-five, but if that seating is there for potential one-hundred-and-ten, we had a real big concern with that. That's a lot of people out there and I understand they're going for a bar crowd and it's going to be noisy. Second concern as we have is just as a result of all this, just obviously the negative impact it's going to have on our neighborhood. Downhill, the negative impact it's going to have on our house is if this becomes a party place out there. Again, I'm not questioning these guys, I'm just saying, hey, if they're not the owners two years from now, what happens to that and how do we deal with it at that point in time? And, you know, what chance do we have to correct the situation? I've already given you some signatures. I went around, collected some more. I ended up with twenty-nine signatures from the neighbors. I'll submit those for you. I made a little map and marked them on here. They represent seventeen homes that we have. Obviously, I've got everybody who's right adjacent to the backyard. I've got pretty much everybody who's right across the street and I've got three houses who are in their backyards who have signed the petition, who have basically said, we're willing to work with them if they're willing to make some corrections as it relates to the sound and how they're going to control the sound. The options we've talked about with them and have... And they haven't been addressed yet. We said construct a true sound barrier on the east side of patio, something that... Planters aren't going to be a sound barrier. A five-foot glass wall is not going to be a sound barrier, it's going to be a windbreak. It's not going to hold sound in. I'm talking having a wall coming right here. If I'm at a bar, it's going to be a lot of people standing and talking and there's going to be music coming from the side of the building. So our option there was build a side barrier on the east side, come around the two corners on the north and south, curve it in a little ways, direct that sound back to the building. It could work. I'm not a architect, I can't tell you how to design it, but we're saying that at least would make it a little more of a doable deal for us. We talked about eliminating the music coming from the top of the building. It blurs out over the whole parking lot. Put ground speakers inside the patio and let it be heard from inside is one of the options that we had. We had the option of eliminating the bar outside, service the patrons from inside, try to restrict it from becoming just a full-fledged bar and more of a social bar so we don't have as many people out there and the noise levels not so great. We talked about restricting the hours at the patio. You know, what hours do you do, I don't know. Our thought was, hey, you know, nine o'clock during the week, ten o'clock on weekends. Something we're going to live with as a neighborhood because it's going to have that impact on us. So on behalf of my neighbors, on behalf of my wife and myself, I just want to thank you guys for listening to our concerns and taking into considerations, you know, our concerns that we have for the negative impact this is going to have on it. I trust you will, you know, vote against it at this point in time and ask it to be redesigned and come back with a better plan that's acceptable to us. So, thank you.
Any questions for Daryl?
Madam Chair? Daryl? You went through quite a long list of issues. You started out by saying that the primary issue was sound. And is this the amplified sound that you're concerned with coming from the speakers that are there now?
You know, it's actually two. I mean, we're concerned about the sound coming from there, but we're also concerned about the noise level that's going to take place just without, you know, potential of a hundred people out there in an outside bar atmosphere. You know, I mean, with our kids there, our backyards right there, you can already hear some of the people out there now, it's not a big deal, but there's maybe only twenty-five, thirty people out there and not all the time is it that full. But you bring it up to seventy people and bring it up to a hundred people, it's going to be loud and we have a lot of concerns about that.
So the patio's been there in place for, what, five years? And has the voice noise been an issue in the last five years?
Put it this way, you can hear it and it affects, you know, when we're back there. For the most part, we can tolerate it. It's not something that's happening to extremes. But the patio that exists right now is more of a, I want to call it an excess dinner capacity patio out there. I mean, it's a small patio with some tables. It doesn't have a full bar, it's not connected to the building. It's not designed... Doesn't have a waterfall out there, a waterfall not... It's not designed to be a full-fledged pub, which is what this is designed to be. And that's our concerns and the impact that's going to have on our... The neighborhood and our backyards and the noise.
I sense that the city has noise ordinances in place to protect the neighbors and adjoining property owners. And those same noise ordinances would have to be... They're going to be in place and McNally's would have to abide by that noise ordinance. So if you had ninety people or eighty-five people, whatever that count is out there, they can't let that noise get out of control.
Right, and the only concern there is we're going to have to then call the cops and turn it in, have the cops come out, check the decibels. Currently, it'd have to exceed a decibel reading of sixty prior to ten-thirty and have to exceed a decibel reading of fifty-five after ten-thirty, you know, to violate, you know, that ordinance. You know, to be honest with you, we don't like to have to go to the headache of having to call the cops to do that, you know. It was kind of funny because as I talked to the most neighbors and we went around and visited with them, it's like, have you guys ever had any issues with the noise and stuff? And it's like, you know, there are times we hear it until the music shut off, you know, and it's like, well, did you do anything? No, it's not all the time and so we just kind of, you know, it's never gotten horrible, never bad, so we let it go. But everybody had a couple of experiences here and there where the noise level has bothered them just as it is today, not with a full bar of pub out there. And that's our biggest concern. You know, I haven't even begun to address the concern we have with just all the people coming and going and the parking lot. I mean, even the hours of operation, if this thing stays open till one o'clock in the morning, I mean, like now, it's probably not going to, okay? But that doesn't mean somebody who owns it down the road is going to say, hey, can you keep this open till one o'clock in the morning? And if that happens, you've got people who are going to hang around there till one-thirty and leaving and it's just going to really negatively affect that whole neighborhood.
Yeah, you understand the balance that the Planning Commission needs to try to strike is is making sure that the bar does not affect... Adversely affect the neighborhood, but at the same time, we can't put McNally's out of business.
Yep. And this is, you know, our intent is not to put McNally's out of business. This is just an expansion to the existing patio, you know. And I explained to them as well last Wednesday evening, I said, we have nothing against McNally's. They're a great neighborhood, it's a great place to go do to, you know, to get a bite to eat and have a couple of drinks. The only thing we're asking is that you at least address the issue of the sound in a little more aggressive manner than what you've got planned right now. Why wait for the trouble to come when we're there now? And you can address it right now and you can build a decent sound barrier, you can plant some trees around it, you can have some of the natural sound barrier. We're just asking that to be addressed and we're much more open to it if that happens. But as we look at it, a five-foot tempered glass wall does nothing but windbreak. A few planters with some plants in there, even when they grow up, unless they're trees, are going to do nothing with that. And that's what our concern is for.
So it really is noise?
That's the biggest part of it, yeah. I mean, that's the major part of it.
Okay, well, thank you, Daryl.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Daryl. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address this item? No? Okay.
Madam Chair? Who presented this, was this David?
Dave.
David, when they talk about if we were to approve this, is this for this petitioner only? Or is this for whoever were to be here from here on?
This would be essentially right now, this would be for whoever because I believe McNally's would be classified as a full-service restaurant and would be outside of the scope of needing a conditional use permit then, like a bar would be. And so, you know, there are mechanisms though. The city council, they do have to renew their liquor license every year and so if it were to get out of hand with a long series of violations that were noted by the police department or the health department, you know, that would be an issue upon the review of their liquor licenses at the city council level.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, David, real quick, like, could you review the zoning history for this particular building?
Yeah. This building, the Plan Development District was created by City Council in November of two thousand and three to allow a mixed-use office and commercial development. And then this specific final development plan was approved on June first of two thousand and five.
And that... You say it's a planned development?
Yep, this corner is the planned development, yep.
Okay. The entire piece of property or just this sub area?
No, the entire piece of property, the entire triangle.
The restaurant bar is a allowable use?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions to Dave? Thank you, Dave.
Madam Chair? Would it be possible to call Diane up again?
Sure. Diane, can you come back, please?
Diane, did you think you were done?
I was kind of hoping.
Diane, I think Daryl was very articulate in explaining his and the neighborhood's concern.
Yes.
I think the overwhelming thing I seem to hear and read in some of these letters is a huge concern about noise. I'm sitting here, they are neighbors. They enjoy some quality of life. Is there a way to do a little bit, something more with this sound barrier that might put them at ease and make me feel comfortable to support this?
Well, if, Steve, if you wouldn't mind going back to our plan. You know, looking at the boulevard there, there are some ornamental trees through that boulevard right now. There certainly is opportunity to add some additional trees there to help absorb some of that sound. There is also the berm further to the east up against the residences. The owner of the development could possibly add. There are quite a few evergreens through there and there's a possibility to add more or that the neighbors certainly could add some in their own backyard. The other thing is if you go back to the aerials, Steve, I just want to point out as a possible additional barrier in the future, if you note, there's an area, there's actually part of a foundation, part of it is parking, but there is supposed to be another personal service building between Williams Insurance and the other personal service building there. So that again would serve as another barrier, possible sound barrier between the neighbors and McNally's.
Trying to keep this from being an issue if it gets approved for you guys down the road. I think when we look at a petition like this, I think you're going to have some neighbors that very well could be changed watching that noise decibel. That's going to initiate a police phone call that is going to create maybe some, you know, problems for the petitioner and that's my reason for asking that.
All I can say is based on their past history, you know, they've been a good business. There has only been, as Nikki mentioned, one former complaint. That was five years ago. There hasn't been other complaints. They've certainly now, because of this minor amendment, are more sensitive to the neighbors there to the east and I think want to be as respectful as they can. And I'm sure they'll take that into account with the music level.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Diane, getting back or following up on what Kenny just said for... You mentioned as well that boulevard, that median...
Correct, yep.
Is probably the best opportunity to capture that sound before it gets too far east.
Yep, and you know, we haven't designated what? We've got a three-foot-wide planting area off the patio. We haven't determined even what would be in there, so that is still a possibility.
And I'm not an acoustician, but I would think too, there might be some speakers that are more directional.
Yeah, and I think even the suggestion of having them right there on the patio and maybe they're facing towards the patio rather than outward to the east.
Facing back to the building.
Or back even to the building. The concern there is you may get some bounce back on it. But yeah, that is certainly something and I don't know who they use for, well, probably music services. Music, so yeah, there's a possibility that they can work with that. Music, so yeah, there's a possibility that they can work with that.
I know there are a lot of things you can do technically, to control sound, without necessarily developing huge barriers, because sound is a wave, and it'll, it'll travel, and the best thing to do is to focus the sound. And I think there's technology available to, to help with that situation.
Yeah, I would agree, yep.
Any further questions for Diane? Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
One minute. Come on up, you're gonna have one minute.
I just wanted to add on this plan you have here. The thing we thought, you know, and I understand a few trees in the boulevard out there, but it seemed like if you're really gonna address the sound issue, not just music, but the voices, you know, and the people drinking, that on that perimeter there, instead of the glass wall, you went in with a solid, soundproof, eight-foot, nine-foot wall, that covered the east side, and came around, and curved it in to force the, the voice levels and stuff, back in that direction, rather than try to let it carry out to the neighborhood. You know, the other thing I just wanna make sure that I reiterated, too, is not just the music, the music can shut off, too. The reason we're looking for that sound barrier to be closer in there is from the noise level from the people who are drinking. I mean, because I know that's gonna be loud, as the night goes on, and you're drinking more, the level of conversation raises with it, and that's our other concern, and that's why we'd like to see that a little tighter in there to, to control that a little more than what we have, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Daryl, I guess, again, it's hard for us to legislate something that's already an ordinance in the city related to noise. And so, if, you know, again, if they comply with that ordinance, they really have the right, because of the zoning, to be there and carry on their business as they do. I think there's some things that we can do, again, technically, and maybe with some vegetation, to try to make sure that noise doesn't spill, as far as it's been spilling. But, you know, I don't know if we can force an owner to build, for all practical purposes, a building without a roof. You know, there's a considerable amount of expense there, and sound will get out the top of that, too. So, again, when I heard that they were maintaining, what, 50 decibels, 60 decibels, that's not a lot of noise at all, in terms of the decibel scale, that's pretty low.
Right, but 60 decibels, once they exceed 60, they'll be in violation, so if they're already near 55, 60, and we double the capacity to that, that's, I guess, our concern is going to get there.
It may, I can't, yeah, we don't know.
Yeah, and I guess from the standpoint of, you know, the fact that the proposed amendment, even also minor amendment's been made, you know, I guess we felt it was our chance now to have the amendment re-proposed, you know, have it deferred, if anything, with a more comprehensive plan, you know, that'll address those issues, and that's pretty much all we're asking for as well, you know, if that's possible, so.
I will look for commission action on item number 11.
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the minor amendment with the two stipulations, but at the same time, I don't know if this can be put in the form of a stipulation, but encourage the continued communication with the neighbors as the plans for this patio are refined, in terms of vegetation, the height of the wall, the technology that you use to amplify and direct sound. All of that, obviously, is in the petitioner's best interest as well, as it relates to the city and existing noise ordinances, so I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I, I feel like Meredith does, I, I'm not gonna support it, not because I'm against the idea or the concept. I wish we could've had a neighborhood meeting where we could've maybe created or showed the neighbors, instead of a five-foot windbreak on that one side, maybe an eight- or nine-foot windbreak that I think could've went a long ways to making them feel a little more comfortable, as far as the noise. If this were to come back in front of me, and if I knew that was gonna happen, I could easily support it. I think this is a good operation, they're good owners, I think they run a good place up there, they've been there for some time. And I realize your folks' concern about increasing the size of an outdoor patio, but what I keep getting back to is the concern about noise, and we can talk about, is it over decibels, or isn't it? If it is, it becomes an issue, it becomes a problem. And I think something other than just a windbreak on that, that east side, in addition to the other things that are there, would go a long ways to making you people feel better about it. Thank you.
Okay, Ken, anything else? No? Okay, well, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Item number 11 carries. Item number 12.